April ninth, two thousand and eighteen order. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Brethauer? Bollig?
Here.
Jacobson?
Here.
Grenier?
Here.
Boudreaux?
Here.
Carpenter?
Here.
Staten?
Okay, thank you. We'll move on now to public appearances. We have with us tonight, three members of the TICI team. And I'll call them up. They're gonna give us a brief overview of their new project and their TIF request. Come on up, gentlemen. And introduce yourself.
Thank you. I'm Jason Ticey, president of TICEY.
Jeff Saban, design principal at TICEY.
And Lauren Zemlicka, design principal at TICEY.
Go right ahead. Just give us your overview and...
Sure. Should I start with... Should we start with our plans? Go through the...
You certainly may. It's your show. So you start anywhere you want.
Well, I'll let Jeff and Lauren talk about the plans where we have them today with our idea, and then I can go over the TIF requests.
Fantastic. All right. Want to start out?
Sure. This, if everyone is current or is familiar with our current location on two eighty-one West Netherwood. We're seeing there, yep, that's the current building, right where that cursor is. Just got hit by a snowstorm, and now it's back. And right across the marsh is the new parcel that we are looking to purchase. And our analysis of the site is, A, it slopes from north to south generally, so we have some plans for retaining any of the water runoff that is local to the site, so as not to be feeding into the marsh. We certainly recognize some of the benefits of the site are the location of the marsh, and we do intend to orient the human workspaces, so office space and celebration and outdoor spaces towards the natural environment of the marsh there. From a construction standpoint, we would be looking to build a ninety thousand square foot facility to begin with the possibility of expanding another sixty thousand onto that. So you're seeing here, the gray boxes represent expansion. And if we flip back one, we would be... This would be the first iteration of the building. This is all preliminary design, but the idea behind the building is a mixed-use facility that would have a large production floor for printing, sign fabrication, metal fabrication of our offset printing, our large format printing, and direct mail and fulfillment center. The orange building with the sloping roof would house offices, be a design studio, be a large break room, and two-story celebratory space inside the building for congregating the whole staff, as well as sales offices, administration, and reception.
As TICEY Design continues to evolve, we are reaching out more nationally as well. So we see this as a visiting area for clients from around the country. So we want to create a building that's very designed forward, designed first. So as you're looking here, this is from CUSIC. We want to put the best face forward of the facility. You see, we have a long screening wall that screens out the docks there. It's also a brand and storytelling wall and acts as the vestibule, the front entry door for our visitors.
The office space would, although being... You would access it from the front. You'd have visitor parking up close, employee parking behind with a pedestrian walk between. We'd have the retention ponds surround and give us some border. You'd have an entry monument that you'd pass, as well as signage to lead a visitor or deliveries back to the dock, or employees or visitors into the parking space. As far as the office, we would have windows towards the parking, but our main view out of the office hub would be towards the marsh. And especially, we are interested in addressing the bike path that passes through there as a communicating... Well, not communicating, but transportation and commuter link to the immediate area. So the path is on the other side of the building, and maybe we see it in the next slide. Yeah, there we go. So as you would approach it, you would have a view to the facade, the back facade. But we also see that as the primary viewing point of the office part of the building. We know that sightlines exist across the existing marsh. So as you were turning from Maine and heading west on Netherwood, you would see the building as the primary facade would face over the marsh and be open to that view. Expansion then would head into the backside of the building there, yeah, to the east.
So I will say, these are preliminary plans. These are our ideas. Jeff and Lauren have actually created these internally. If this project moves forward, obviously, we'll be hiring and working with an architect and fine-tuning, but this is just an idea at this point.
Fantastic.
Yeah, sure. Sure.
And then while he's doing that, gentlemen, could you explain for the viewing public what you do exactly?
Sure. So TICEY is a branding agency. That's our new slogan, where you go with your brand. We like to... We have... We're an in-house design studio with a manufacturing backbone. So we do printing, large format printing and signage, like these guys said, but our whole business starts with design. And we like to take the project from beginning to end.
Thank you.
So for seventy-six years, you know, TICEY existed as traditional printing and then as Jason, in the last, I don't know, five, six years has really pushed the capabilities of TICEY. Lauren and I started a design department with Jason that enables us to take someone's brand or someone's facility and tell your story, bring your brand to the forefront of what a visitor or a user, an employee sees. And so that branch of the company has been attracting national attention. So we have projects currently in six different states, some major student unions. We have a six hundred thousand square foot student union in California that we've been developing. We do athletic brands, but a lot of corporate and user experience spaces that have large format printing, signage, and basically rolling out your brand for whatever that company has in their physical and visual environment.
Okay. Thank you. Nice video.
Thank you.
How many years have you been in your current location?
We moved to Oregon in May of two thousand and twelve.
So it's all... You've been there six years?
Six years.
And now, what's your current size of your current plant?
The size of, like, employees or...
Well, how many square feet did you build?
Square... So we built twelve thousand square feet in May of twelve. And in two thousand and fourteen, we added another eighteen.
That's fantastic. That's exciting. That's great growth. And now you're gonna go to ninety.
Right. Yeah, we're renting space to get by at a building a few blocks, a block away. But yeah, our preliminary calculations for our needs is ninety thousand square feet.
Well, thank you for choosing Oregon for your location.
Yeah, it's been... It's been an amazing six years. I'll say that. When we moved here in two thousand and twelve with thirteen employees, I had no idea we'd be sitting here today with eighty employees currently looking to hire an additional ten to twenty next year, potentially. It's been... It's been... It's been an amazing six years. And part of that process all started with coming to Oregon and you guys opening your arms to us six years ago. So it's been... It's been quite the story.
Well, we're looking forward to helping you grow even more. Anyone on the board or staff have any questions for the team right now?
This is awesome. Very exciting.
Yeah, it is.
As noted at home, as noted on the agenda, we're gonna go into a closed session at the end with Matt and Dan. Dan from Vandewell is also here, so...
And then I would imagine staff will contact Jason tomorrow.
Yeah, I have a call. Jason's set up, yep.
Okay. Fantastic. Thank you for coming here, giving us your overview. It was very nice. Did you do that in-house, too?
Right here.
That's great. Yeah, it's exciting what they can do with...
We built a lot of three-D models like that for our clients and different projects that... So we can give them a different overview of just ink on paper of what their project will look like before we install.
That's amazing. Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, we'll move on to item four, which is approval of minutes from October twenty-third, two thousand and seventeen. Could I please have a motion?
So moved.
And a second.
A second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the minutes? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. We'll move from there on to the vouchers. Tonight, we've got operating invoices in the amount of two hundred and nine thousand fifteen dollars and fifty-two cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers.
Okay. Total vouchers are four forty-six, nine eighty-eight, sixty-nine. You want to amend your motion to four hundred and sixty-nine? Four forty-six, nine eighty-eight, sixty-nine, then, Jeff?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers in the amount of four hundred and forty-six thousand nine hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-nine cents.
And could I please have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you. Are there any questions from the board on the vouchers? Anyone?
Nope.
Okay. I think I have a couple. Lakeside International Truck One Eighteen, their rear airbag got replaced. Is there an accident that caused that airbag to deploy?
Right, Jeff? Which number, again?
It is forty-seven, forty-six. It's Truck One Eighteen. I guess my question's gonna be, has that been turned into insurance?
Yes.
Okay. All right. And I asked staff earlier today about the next one. We were paying Stafford Rosenbaum for evictions from the motel.
That's correct. There was a tenant that hadn't paid since May of last year. The previous owner of the property started the paperwork, and we found out about it at closing. And it was Matt's determination, which was the right determination, to start over again. So she was... She did leave as of March thirtieth.
Okay. And I guess the plan there is what? We're gonna get that all vacated and empty by July?
Yeah, we'll send a letter at least thirty days before July eighth to say that they have to be out by July eighth and so...
Yeah, just to remind the board, these tenants were all occupying their units on month-to-month leases. And we gave them notice, the village gave them notice prior to buying the property that they would all be allowed to stay for six months beyond our closing date and that then we would need them to vacate. And so they all have through that July... July eighth to remain there. As you know, the purpose of the village's acquisition of the site was for redevelopment, not to continue leasing it. If tenants continue to pay their rent, then they can stay through July. If tenants are not paying their rent, then we're taking appropriate action to...
Thank you. That's very good. Okay. Let's approve the vouchers. We... I think we did approve them. We need a roll call vote on that now.
Yep.
Carpenter? Yes. Grenier?
Yes.
Jacobson?
Yes.
Bollig?
Yes.
Boudreaux?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll move on to item six, which is community input. Is there anyone from the community that wishes to address the board on any matter that's not on the agenda tonight? Well, have at it. Just tell the community who you are, though.
Okay. Judy Knudsen, I'm the executive director of the chamber. I just wanted to thank everybody for coming out to the Omni technology that we had last week for our groundbreaking. And also, May ninth will be the hotel groundbreaking. And I would like to invite the community to come out to that, too. And that'll be at ten o'clock on May ninth over by the gun shop. So the dirt is moving already, but May ninth will be a beautiful day.
Yeah, they've got the lot all skinned off already.
They do.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks nice.
It's already an improvement. So thank you, Judy. Anyone else before we move on? Sir, come on up.
Hi there. My name is Robert Kane, and I live at eight sixty-five Longwood Drive. I'm here representing a company I work for, but moreover, just as a citizen of Oregon. I work for Polco, which is a civic engagement company. And we work to increase the amount of people that are participating in local politics on issues and stuff that's going on. So I graduated from the school district here in two thousand and twelve. I graduated from Whitewater last May. And since then, I guess I started as an intern there. I've been working with this company for about twenty months. And we try to increase participation, as I mentioned. So we have a platform for cities to post questions to, and then there are further citizens to respond to those questions in a verified way. So we make sure they are actual citizens by verifying them against the voter roll. And overall, we've seen some pretty good results right now. We are in, I think, about forty cities or so. About three dozen of them are in the Wisconsin area. And probably twelve to fifteen of them are in the Madison area. So I saw Carp Sea up on the screen there, but we're working with Carp Sea as well. Middleton, and one of our biggest successes is Oshkosh, where we helped kind of resolve a contentious issue with our golf course with Oshkosh Corporation getting some land there. So I just want to make myself a point of contact, and I'm kind of devoted to this idea. It's run by a couple of veterans, and overall, I believe in the cause. I just got back from Tacoma, Washington, where we were a sponsor for the Alliance for Innovation Conference, which is just new ideas that help increase quality or just participation in government and overall. So the company's Polco. My name's Robert Kane, and I'm interested in bringing Polco to Oregon if necessary, or if you guys deem it so. So I got information. I can pass it out, or I can save that and email it or something like that.
Okay. Would board members like it passed out, or would you like to wait?
I'd be happy to take the information.
Sure.
Okay.
And I'd encourage you to contact Judy.
Sure. On the front is just an example of a question that Oshkosh asked, and the results we are will provide them. We're not too invasive. We don't ask for any sort of personal details. We just try to mail them up against the voter data file with their names.
Thank you.
It's pretty cool. We work for annual surveys, hot topic issues, performance improvements.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for attending tonight. Next, we will move on to item seven, proclamations and announcements. First, we have board comments. Anyone on the board have a comment they'd like to make? If not, I'll make a couple tonight, I believe, would have been Doug Brethauer's last meeting, if he...
No, next Monday.
Next Monday, okay. But anyway, I'll still... I'll go on to thank Doug for, I think he's been, what, six years or four, a member of the board?
Doug came on with me.
So how?
First time?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think Doug came out with me the first time. Let's make it four years.
Four years. So I want to thank him for his years of service. It's very special to step forward in the community and offer to serve because, as you know, that it's a... It can be a little strenuous at times. And I tell you what, it's much appreciated, and it's a privilege, but yet it's an honor. It's so... Next, I want to welcome Darlene Grenier back. I want to congratulate her on being here tonight. We're really glad she could join us. I'll move on to staff comments. And village administrator is gonna discuss the downtown parking.
Yeah. So as I noted on the agenda, we had a very good meeting with downtown property owners and businesses and residents at our March eighth planning staff meeting. And we were going to do a report tonight, but Steve, President Staten, who was at that meeting, is not here tonight, and he asked me to delay this for one meeting, so we'll talk about it on the sixteenth. But I do have some great news to report, that the Lutheran Church on Washington Street has agreed to allow the public to use their parking lot except for on Sundays from nine to ten, no charge. It's amazing outreach by them and a wonderful offer. And I thank them publicly and also Judy for reaching out to them. Judy was at the meeting and took the initiative to contact Mike, who is a council president or church president. And Mike's also our insurance agent, which is nice, so nice connection there. But I do want to thank them. And we'll have more discussion about parking at the next board meeting.
Yeah, I just want to mention on that note, my family was in town over the weekend, and there was... We were driving three cars, and we were able to go to Sunny's for dinner, and we parked right here in the municipal parking lot, right next to each other, one, two, three. So it was a great afternoon. We just walked across the street and had a great dinner at Sunny's. So it's working out well.
Yep.
Fantastic. Anything else, Mike?
Then Judy stole my thunder about the groundbreaking. That's okay. Just we're excited about the hotel. And then spring election results are in the packet. Open book is coming in April, and there's an extra session of open book we add on April eighteenth from four to seven. Board review is gonna be in...
Mike, can I pause you for a second?
Yeah, sir.
Just would you explain what open book is? Or what... The Stevens Village Clerk, explain it.
Open book...
Picking and talking to the mic.
You knew?
I don't like talking. Open book is a chance for residents to come and talk to the assessor about their assessed value of their property. Letters did go out this past Friday, so I have already started receiving some phone calls on assessed values. We've got three dates, well, this Friday and next Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday available for people to stop in and make appointments. Or I'm sorry, make appointments online, as the letter says, and stop in for their appointment. So...
Okay. Thank you. Again, that's... I got my new assessment today in the mail. And as Peggy just explained, if you feel it was way out of line, this is your chance to come down and meet with the gentleman that set the assessment. So make use of that.
And then as a follow-up to that, the board review meets on May twenty-first from four to six p.m. And that's where... There you need to have an appointment, as we were talking about, for that. And that's... So that's the night where the board meeting's gonna start an hour later on May twenty-first. Upcoming election dates are August fourteenth and November sixth, and then the board meetings are April sixteenth. Next Monday night, we're gonna have the Rettler Group will be back to talk about JSC Park West, as I mentioned, downtown parking. And I'm thinking the drainage issues, I think we may bump that to the May seventh meeting because I think the sixteenth is gonna be somewhat of a long meeting, and so I think we'll do that in May. And Matt's not disappointed in that, so... And then the organizational meeting is next Tuesday, and then we're gonna have the discussion about alcohol licensing at that meeting. May seventh is the first board meeting in May. And I'll tell Bernie Ernst, I think we're gonna have the auditors do their presentation at that meeting, the audit, and also talk... We're gonna be talking about two thousand and eighteen borrowing at that meeting as well. And then May twenty-first is what I just mentioned. So I had...
Thanks, Mike. We'll move on to the accumulation miscellaneous business. Item A is just FYI. It's a communication from Public Works Director Jeff Row to Mr. Will Parker, who is the, I believe, the chairman of the...
President of Friends...
President of the Friends of...
Anderson Park.
Anderson Park. If you haven't been out there, it's unbelievable what they've done out there already. And I think there's over a mile of walking trail.
Yeah.
That's prepared, and it's... If you... There's a list here of what they're gonna do this year. It's extensive. It's incredible. I'd say by the end of this year, that is already gonna be a very nice park.
Yep.
And just on another note, the Dean County Parks is supported by over two thousand volunteers. So it's the volunteers that make the parks look the way they do. So you have anything else, Jeff, that you want to mention?
No, we're just very happy to support them. And our residents, both town residents and village residents, use the park extensively and also volunteer up there quite a bit. So it's a good... It continues to be a good investment for the village, but we're happy to... I think as a village, we should be happy to support them in their efforts to obtain grants and encourage them as well.
Thank you, Jeff, for doing that. Item B is a security camera upgrade. I believe this is at the police department, correct?
Correct.
I'll turn it over to Chief Uhl.
Okay. As you can see in the memo, we're looking to upgrade our security camera system with the development of the youth center, the removal of our impound lot, and the expansion of the buildings here in the village. I needed to take a look at our camera system. We also have some that are currently going out at the PD that need to be replaced. And I have... I needed to decide whether or not to renew licensing for some of the cameras under our current system. I'm not sure if you had a chance to look at the package yet or not, but I am recommending the Enterprise Systems Group, although it is a little bit higher than the rest. I won't have to worry about renewing licensing every year or every three years, depending on what we go with. So it'll actually be cheaper in the long run to use this system that we're currently using right now.
Okay. Thanks, Chief. And we've got a recommended motion to approve the proposal from Enterprise Systems Group in the amount of twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars and seventy cents for a security camera upgrade.
So moved.
At the second, please.
A second, Ed.
Got a motion and a second. And again, the funding is gonna be from two thousand and eighteen borrowing, right, Mike?
That's correct.
So all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item C is an action regarding downtown QuickTrip and a release of easement number two oh five five one one seven. And there's also a recommended motion attached to that, and that is to approve the release of easement number two oh five five one one seven for the existing QuickTrip property at one thirty-five North Main Street.
So moved.
And Jenna, we got a second from Jenna. Jeff, you want to give us a little background on that?
Just briefly, this is a housekeeping item. It was an easement. We used to have a sewer main kind of through the parking lot between the overhead canopy and what is now the antique shop. When we installed the large sewer interceptor, it actually went to the other side of where the canopy is, kind of between the canopy and the building. And this was a sewer easement for that old sewer. There is something in the easement that says if we quit using it, the easement goes away. But QuickTrip is working on upgrading their tanks in this area, and they just wanted this cleaned up. So this is just a formal... We had Matt draft this release of the easement, and that's kind of about all it is.
This won't change-
This changes really nothing.
Any outward appearance of QuickTrip or-
Nope.
This does not cost the village any money at all?
No.
So, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda is Police Department disposal items. And that recommended motion is to approve disposal of Police Department items. Would someone please make that motion?
So moved. Second.
We've got a motion in a second, a little discussion about that, Chief.
Yep. So we're still trying to clean out our garage. And so we have some of these items that have been there for a very long time. And some of the items that came from the 1033 program, which is, we get from the government that they no longer want back, such as the green tarps and the sleeping cots. So I don't know if there's some of these things. I'm told that the freezer may still work, but they're not really sure about that. And so we would consider donating those if someone wants them, otherwise we're going to dispose of them.
And how would find, someone find out about those if you're interested?
Yeah, I'll put it on the Facebook page or something like that, yeah.
All right. Thanks, Chief.
There's a lot of coffee.
All those-
There's a lot of coffee.
You want that ten gallon coffee pot?
Coffee and donuts, right?
That's right.
Ten gallons of coffee?
That's a lot.
You know, I've always said that if it were up to, if the cops were the only ones that ate donuts, they'd run out of business.
Talk to your neighbor there. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
Item E is FYI. We've got the RFP for banking. New due date's May 4th, right, Lisa?
Yes, it is.
Okay, are there going to be any big changes in this RFP?
Well, the changes that Matt made in January that the board recommended, so we'll see.
Right, the board was making some adjustments based on some feedback we got to the earlier RFP.
That's the early two versions.
The earlier versions, some of the local banks in particular were asking for some adjustments so that they would be in a position to respond and qualify. So it's out now, right?
It is out.
I sent it out.
And, yeah, let's hope this time-
A lot of response.
Third time's a charm, we know, yeah.
How many did we get last time?
Well, we really didn't get any, because nobody qualified.
Right.
And we kept telling them where we're going to rebuy the RFP and we're going to send it out again, so that's what we've been doing. I keep updating the banks that we're dealing with, letting them know what's happening. And then I finally got the third version sent out, so we'll see what that goes.
Keep the interest there. Keep the interest alive.
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll move on to item F. And that's possible action regarding promoting Joy Hanson to deputy clerk position. And there's a recommended motion to approve promoting Joy Hanson to deputy clerk with an hourly rate of 2169 and allowing the position to be at 30 hours per week, except when required for elections and on special occasions. Could I please have that motion?
So moved.
And a second.
A second, Ed.
Thank you. Who would like to give an overview of that?
Peggy, it's your position, Peggy. I'm speaking to the mic.
Are you new?
She hates when I do that, huh?
I'm trying to juggle more than one thing, so.
I want to steal your thought.
Oh, you don't have, you don't have to steal.
You can take it up with Mike afterwards.
So Joy has been working with the village for, I have it in my paperwork here, since 2000.
Long time, yep.
A long time. And she's been doing, in the last few years, she's stepped up and started doing other things besides what she, what is in her job description. She's been working on the website. She has been helping with special projects. She has been helping with clerk projects.
She does the packets in a pinch for us.
Yes. She has been, yeah, doing some deputy clerk duties. And so we had a discussion that we thought that maybe it would be a good idea for her to move into that position. And we think that she would be a good fit for it. She knows things, she knows how the office runs. We just, I think that she would do a great job in this position. She's the type of person that wants to start something and finish it, so.
Okay. How long has the deputy clerk position been empty?
Just over a year.
That's been-
Not quite a year. Or not quite a year.
A cost savings measure, I assume?
All of last, all of last, half of last year. It was in the budget, but we didn't have it filled.
It's cost savings, but we're not getting things done. It's an important position. We need to get caught up in the minutes, for example, and just, I could give you a long list if you're interested.
Qualification of ordinances.
Any questions from the board on this? And because it's budgeted, there's no fiscal impact? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you for that.
Item G, action regarding recruiting for utility clerk two, which is the position that would be vacated. And the recommended motion is to authorize recruiting for utility billing clerk two, special projects position. And that's the water utility clerk.
Right, so basically backfilling for Joyce's position, but we're recommending that that position actually be 40 hours so we don't lose 10 hours in the office.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
A second, Ed.
And any further discussion or questions on that? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item H, Jefferson Street and South Main Street Parking Lot Improvement Project. The recommended motion attached to that is to recommend rejection of the bids for Jefferson Street and South Main Street Parking Lot Lighting and Electrical Improvements received on March 29th, including the bid from Van Brocklin Electric. We further recommend authorizing Public Works to work with MSA to rebid the project with later completion dates and elimination of the online bidding requirements. Recommend authorizing Public Works to recommend, to work with Jefferson Crossing Contractor for installation of conduit and light pole bases in a portion of the parking lot and along the south side of Jefferson Street. That is a long motion.
That's a record.
I'd say so. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to, would someone like to make that motion, please?
I'll make that motion, so we can-
And someone please second that.
I'll second it.
And-
Yeah, let me give you, I don't want to gloss over anything here, because I think this is important, just to get the full range of what we're talking about here. This is, this is the project that involves basically undergrounding the electric lines through the parking lot and new services to the back of the buildings in South Main Street, as well as extending the period lighting, both in the parking lot, the South Main Street parking lot, as well as both sides of Jefferson down to the railroad viaduct or the railroad underpass there. And this has been designed by our, one of our engineers, MSA. They put together a nice design package. It went out, we had four people that were supposedly going to bid on it. And when it came down to the bid time and the bid deadline went past, we had zero. One of the bidders had difficulty entering under the electronic format. We were trying a new bidding format, but it turns out that wasn't the only problem they were having. It was pretty much dealing with the completion date and timeframe. We did get a late bid from Van Brocklin Electric, and that bid came in at just under $570,000. Our estimate with contingency from the engineers was about $430,000. So it was a difference of almost $150, you know, $140,000, $150,000 higher than the estimate with contingency. And so, you know, we had to really look at things, where that was coming from. And, you know, there are some things that our engineer spoke to them, to the contractor about their bid a little bit. But I, I just don't feel comfortable at this time that I can recommend us spending an additional $140,000 plus, any extras that would be under the contract, without getting, in my opinion, a good competitive bid on this. Now, the tricky part of this, if this were, say, just a roadway project and we said, okay, we're going to have to wait six months and rebid it later, that's fine. But we're talking about a parking lot that's torn up, that will continue to be torn up. We're talking about a building that's going to need to be occupied and scheduled for occupation starting in July 1st. And so we met with the contractor's superintendent over there on that, this following Monday, a week ago. And they were very good to work with. They, you know, we kind of came up with a plan that would allow probably a gravel entrance to the back of their building throughout the summer. And then allowing them to also maybe do some of the work that would run the underground conduit that might be in the way, as well as some of the bases for the light posts that would be in the way. And we'd be able to kind of work with them on getting that work done and then be able to rebuild, rebid this project with a little less work under it, but kind of stretching that timeframe out to hopefully end of summer or even into September. That would allow some of these companies that were a little nervous on the timeframe to bid the project. Now, the risk going to a rebid is we could, we could end up with zero bids. You know, we have one right now. We could end up with zero and then we're wondering, you know, then what we can do. And Matt, I don't know, after a while, do we, can you get to a point where you then just go out and hire a contractor?
No.
You're shaking your head yes?
Yes.
I didn't think so. So we'll have to cross that bridge when we get to it. You know, this is a kind of a sign of where we are right now. There's a lot of work out there and there's a lot of things going on. And, you know, prices are, have gotten more expensive as people get so busy. But what, what we're asking to do really is basically to, first of all, reject the bids. That's the, that's the formal motion that you'll have to do in that first part of the recommendation. The second one is authorizing us to go ahead and make the small changes to the bid package dates and some completion times and everything like that, and then be able to go out and re-advertise for that. Obviously, we're going to hit the pavement a little more with our engineers. Our engineers will try to drum up some contractors that'll do that. And then lastly, kind of authorize us to work with the contractor over there in doing, you know, some underground conduit installation work so that we're not holding up their building or their concrete sidewalk around and the landscaping and everything like that. I think this is going to work. It's a little less than ideal, but one thing that we found along with this project is there's nothing ideal over there. It's just a very tight area. And, you know, I think when this all gets done, it's going to be a very positive thing. You may have noticed that the power lines are down along Jefferson Street, so that's kind of fun to see. There's still a few cable lines and stuff like that that are still aerial, but some of the stuff that's on East and West is down. But that kind of gives you the Cliff Notes version of everything that we've gone through, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
It sounds like you're going to get rid of the online process.
We're not getting rid of it yet. It's just, honestly, I think some of the contractors, it's new and it's confusing. The one contractor that was late had their bid downloaded and everything, but they didn't have their bid bond scanned. They were trying to do that and everyone's doing things at last minute nowadays and that's really caught them off guard. I'm just removing it from the table. We've had two kind of bumpy starts with that online bidding. It'll eventually be a thing that everybody does all the time, but we're just, we tried it on this one, we'll take it away on this one.
So you're going to go back to conventional mail?
Mail, and they just walk them in at-
Walk them in.
1:52 P.M. and have them stamped and then delivered. That's pretty standard.
Anyone have any questions for Jeff? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Good luck with that. Item I, discussion and action regarding NAS Pro Value Point Commercial Card Solutions. That's the village's new credit card company. And we have a recommended motion to approve the contract with NAS Pro Value Point Commercial Card Solutions, village's new credit card vendor.
I think it's a great idea that you're looking to try to maximize the spending and focus it on a rewards card, so. Thank you for getting out of the box.
Yeah, we currently have reward cards, but it's the, the group that we're part of, we currently go through JP Morgan and they're switching to US Bank. So this is, this will be the same concept that we have right now, but we'll be using US Bank and we're going to look into figuring out how to utilize the program a lot better. We're going to sit down with some of the other neighboring communities that use it and figure out how they utilize it. Because we, it was set up when I came and I haven't looked into like how to best utilize it, so we're going to work on that.
Thank you.
So you're making that motion then, Jeff?
Uh, yeah, I'll make a motion to approve the contract with NAS Pro Value Point Commercial Card Solutions.
And a second, please.
Second.
Motion and a second, and further discussion on that item? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item J, we have a recommended motion to appoint a new member to the Cable TV Committee. The motion is to, a recommended motion is to appoint Michael Houtsinger to the Cable TV Committee for a term ending in 2018. And there's a note attached to this that the TV Committee is increasing to nine members. Would someone like to make that motion, please?
I'll make that motion.
And would someone like to second that motion?
I'll second that one.
Thank you. Any discussion on this one from anyone on Cable TV? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Item K is a task order from Rooker Milky related to the 2018 Urban Water Quality Grant. And the recommended motion here is to approve Task Over Task Order 2018-02 from Rooker Milky in the amount of $5,393 for the design and preparation of pond improvements at Oregon Ice Arena Stormwater Pond and submittal of a grant application to Dean County.
I'll make that motion.
And second, please?
I'll second.
Go ahead, Karen.
I got a second from Darlene then? Jeff, you want to handle this one also?
Yep, absolutely. Okay, so I have up on the screen the Oregon Ice Arena up here. You see the wastewater treatment plant over here. Perry Parkway is, is the new Perry Parkway connection will be going right through here. As you probably remember, as part of the Perry Parkway work is we're actually utilizing the Ice Arena Stormwater Management Pond, which is right here. It's something that even the Ice Arena folks have agreed to that they haven't necessarily maintained throughout the years. I don't believe it was ever really installed with a really good outlet structure. And it should be more like a deep pond like you see over here for better filtering. It should also have more of an outlet structure other than just an exposed pipe for peak flow control. We actually have an easement with, or an agreement with the Oregon Ice Arena that they're, we're expecting them to sign and allowing us to basically take over maintenance of this pond. It's part of the agreement to do all this. And, but this pond needs some work. And we acknowledge that. We were made aware of this grant program that would reimburse the village 50% up to $100,000 for making, I mean, it fits right in the plan of it, making improvement to existing stormwater facilities for runoff rate control and peak flow control. So what we did is ask our engineers to prepare a task order for that. So they do the design, they submit the application, has to be submitted at the end of this month. And then, assuming we're, we're successful with it, we already have a contractor on site that can do the work right there and we could add it as a change order to the project and be able to incorporate it. It's very, I think it's very efficient, very smooth and a great opportunity. If we don't do it today, we'll probably end up having to do it in the future, which we would have to then have a new contractor come out and re-mobilize and everything like that. I think it's just the right time for this.
Are there any questions for Jeff? Jeff, so this is not the responsibility of the Ice Arena Board or to handle their own-
We're taking over the responsibility of the pond, long-term maintenance.
And one of, what we're getting is the right to use the pond to serve our Perry Parkway Extension Project.
Okay.
So we need a pond for stormwater management for our project and they're going to let us use their property.
Okay. That makes sense now.
Yep.
Okay. How will you pay for the other 50%?
The other 50% is, the bids did come back, I think favorably, and we still do have some money in contingency. We have about $100,000 in contingency. I don't anticipate that being used, but we have borrowed for that amount. And, and so that will be out of that borrowing, just like we would with the roadway. I don't anticipate this work being more than, say, $50,000. I may be wrong until we get this designed, but, you know, then I would, at a 50% grant share, that would be 25 for our share. I think well within what we could afford.
Very good. Any questions regarding this? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Nine, we'll move on to number nine, which- Nine, we'll move on to number nine, which is reported committees. First up, we have personnel, public safety and protection from March 26th, and I'll turn it over to Trustee Carpenter.
Thank you. So, item one is discussion and possible action regarding Alan Chapman's operator's license application. So, the recommended motion that came out of the committee was we recommend that we deny the license and we asked Mr. Chapman or recommend that he reapply in three years consideration if his record has remained clean for 10 years, as his last violation was in 2011.
And the basis for the recommendation, as I recall, was that he has a record of numerous OWI convictions. I think the last, last of which was seven years ago.
In 2011. So I would, I would make that motion.
Someone please second that?
Oh, seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Uh, item number two, it sounds like this is going to be at the April 16th meeting. Just to let you know, the committee, we talked about ordinance amending various sections of the Village of Oregon Code relating to animals and we discussed regulating chickens and honeybees. Very exciting. And so we'll talk about that April 16th.
They're already here. We're just going to regulate them.
Well, I, I will tell you, I'm getting some emails about it, so I think this is going to be interesting discussion about chickens and bees.
Well, I, like you say, I know they're here. Yeah, so, I mean, people have them and now they're getting nervous because they're.
No, no, it's, it's not, it's not that as much. I'll, I'll show, I'll show the emails.
Okay, I won't, I won't belabor it now. Thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Item number three, we have updated summary of major crimes. Chief, you want an overview or just take questions?
Yeah, I'll, I'll take questions. I will just point out that, um, the bank robbery, the attempted bank robbery that we had back in 2016 of Union Bank and Trust. You'll note on here that we believe we have found the person responsible for that based on DNA evidence that we found on a bike near the scene. The DA's office has declined to charge, saying, stating that, um, that even though they think they have, we have the, the right person, um, they invited us for a meeting to talk about it and discuss it. However, I never received an invitation to the meeting. Um, and so I called them out on that and they said, well, that must have slipped through the cracks. And so now we have another meeting to discuss it on Wednesday, so. Um, I'm not very hopeful that they're going to charge it and they've, they had, I, I got a 2017 report from the DA's office. There was over 3,000 felonies reported to their office and they did not charge over 500 of them, so. That's the, that's the path the DA's office is going down right now.
Do you have any other options in that?
No, nope, nope.
Chief, is it, is it your understanding that's a resource issue from their perspective or is it, is it, is that not the only issue?
I don't think that's the only issue, but that's, that's the main issue he focuses on.
Well, this list is very interesting. You obviously have a very busy department and staff, so.
Yes, we do.
I, every time we see, I see this list, I, I'm always looking at it going, I didn't even know this stuff was going on in town, so. Thank you. Thanks to you and your staff. Any questions from the board? Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
We'll move on to B, Public Works and Utility Committee Meeting. Uh, Trustee Brett, Brett Hauer isn't here, so I'll, I'll lead into the motions. Motion number one is to approve adding street sign toppers to nine locations within the South Main Street District Neighborhood. And the note is to signs and mounting brackets to be supplied by the neighborhood group installed by Public Works.
So moved, well, second rather.
Second, thank you. And, uh, Randy, did you have anything you'd like to say about this? Randy Glash is coming up to the mic right now. He's the, again, he doesn't have much to do, so he, 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 he doesn't have a major fundraising project right now, so he's working on sign toppers.
So, so I need to start with a little story. I was at the Firefly on Saturday with an ex-co-worker who lives in Madison. And one of the things that she said to me, she, she said how lucky I was to be living in this village with all these wonderful old houses and old buildings. And, and that relates to, to what we're going to talk about, but I, I'm also kind of very humbled in the next couple of weeks, we're going to be receiving two very statewide historic preservation and advocacy awards for our, our work here. Obviously, you could tell this stuff is passionate to me, but one, one of the things related to the, the item on the agenda is, obviously, I, I live in the South Main Historic Neighborhood. And, um, from my previous work in Madison as president of my neighborhood association for 17 years, I'm always looking to sort of, how do we improve the neighborhood? How do we make it better? And because this is a historic neighborhood, I, I have interest in elevating or branding that neighborhood. Let's, it's, it's a, it's got a great sense of community. Let's, let's show it off a little bit. And so the idea of these, these sign toppers, and you may have seen them, they're all, they're all over the country, basically. They, they, they fit on the, the street signs and they basically are, are like the logo that you see there. It's just, actually, that's a, and Jeff has a, a example. So it's just a little, it's just a little identification sign of the neighborhood and, and you may, you may be also know that we're working on a, a neighborhood identification sign with the UW Clinic as well, which is the same, the same logo. So you'll see, you'll see that in the logo, I think everybody has a colored copy. This, this has gone over fantastic. It's been around almost a year. We've had it around. These are actually houses on South Main Street. We actually had this designed by somebody in El Paso, Texas, one of, actually my partner's brother. So, we're very proud of this and, and these would be the sign toppers. And we, and so what I did, this was my idea. And so I, I just, and whenever I sort of have an idea, if it's my idea, I'm willing to pay for it. So I'm willing to buy these for the neighborhood. But I went to Jeff, I went to the, the mic and said, is this even a possibility to do? And so we've sort of worked through several, several issues. But I, I have to, I'm going to point out something. We got a, we got an email on Friday from the Thieves. And a little backstory is when we dealt with the, the Magnificent Seven houses on, on South Main Street last year. I reached out to the Thieves, had a meeting with them. I showed them the potential neighborhood sign design. I actually even gave them T-shirts with the design on it. So in their email, which I was a little taken back by, it says that we never asked them about it, never got their approval, because what we did, to be inclusive, if you see, two of their houses are included. And so that was our attempt after the fiasco with the, the houses to include two of their houses. They had two, two nice houses. Netherwood is also on the, the logo, but they, they did not own the, the Netherwood building at the time we did the logo, but we, so we included the two houses as a way of reaching out, being inclusive. But now in their email, they're saying, nobody ever asked us. We don't know anything about it. But I had a meeting with them and I showed them. I gave them T-shirts with the logo. So, one of the things that I'm concerned, I don't want them hanging this over our head. And so I don't know if we get rid of their houses off the logo completely. I was a little taken back by the email. I guess maybe it was directed at me, but but back to the toppers, I mean, it's a way for us to give the neighborhood a little bit more identity, to, to showcase it a little bit. And so, you know, I think it's, we think it's a good, I talked to my neighbors too about it. So, so that's kind of the dilemma. I don't want to go forward, spend $500 on these toppers and then have the Thieves come back and say, because they're saying, you didn't, you didn't get our permission to use our house.
Matt, you have any wisdom to share? I mean, I don't see where rendering of the outside of a house is a copyrighted thing, is it?
Not that I'm aware of, but honestly, I've not, I have not looked at this at all. I did see the email, but I have not looked at the legality.
So Matt, what we did, basically, we, we took a, we took a street view, the picture, and you see the logo is actually drawn. So this is a drawn, and we tried to make it, obviously, they look realistic of the houses, but I don't want this hanging over us.
Right, so, I mean, I, I, there's, there's a legal issue and the legal issue is, you know, is there any kind of a legal problem with using someone, an image of someone's house without their permission? I don't know. We can look into that if we, if we decided we wanted to. I suppose, uh, an alternative to that would be, I mean, they, they didn't say in their email that, you know, they, they were necessarily opposed to it. They just seemed to be complaining that nobody had talked to them. So, I know you.
I did. I had a meeting with them.
Right, so they seem, there seems to be a disconnect somehow. I'm not sure why. So, I suppose one option would be to just say, well, talk to them and see if you can get all on the same page. And if you can, great. If the board wants me, for example, to provide a, I mean, these are going to be, these are going to be put on official signs. These are going to be topping official village signs, right?
Just on street signs. Yeah, they go on the top of the crisscross street signs.
Right, so if the board wants a legal opinion for me about whether we can put images of privately owned buildings on a sign like that with or without permission, I can do that. I mean, I, but I, I, I think it would might be.
Well, Matt, here's, I mean, I'm certainly willing to find two other houses.
That's another option.
That's the easy, or, or we can modify these so it does not look like the Thieves' houses.
Right, so those are, those are other options.
Yeah, the other concern is, is the, um, we like, I mean, I like the Netherwood building in our logo. The, the, the Netherwood building is a, is a National Historic Registry landmark. Is that, do I have the same issue? Do I have to take that out?
Well, again, as I understand, I, I haven't looked at this, but I don't believe you have a privacy interest in protecting the image of the exterior of a building that you own on a street. I mean, we, I think I can take a picture of people's houses as I drive by and I could publish a newspaper article and put a picture in there. I think that's all okay from a legal standpoint. I don't know. I haven't looked at it. My, my gut tells me that if we look at it, that'll be the conclusion we come to. Now, you may say, if, if that's the correct answer legally, the, the decision might be, let's, let's just go with that. Or you might still decide you want to change some of the images just because you don't want to hear complaints about it.
Well, I, I just don't want this, I mean, we want to move forward on these things. I don't want this hung over our heads by the Thieves, to be honest with you. And it, and it's very easy, we'll, we'll, we'll send it back to El Paso. We'll change, we'll take their two houses. I'll take Netherwood out. I'll put the, the Welcome Center or something else in. I, I just don't, I don't want this continued to, to, to be bashed and me personally be attacked by them.
Well, it's your project at this point, right? So, I mean, you can do what you wish to do, do what you think is the right thing to do, and then we can see where we are.
I, I would like to have this approved tonight. I mean, I really, we'll make the changes.
No, no, Randy, I, I have every intention of asking this group to approve the motion as we have it. And so you can determine if you want to go forward with it after tonight.
Okay, I mean, I, we were trying to be, we were trying to be inclusive.
No, and I appreciate that.
And I, I don't have any, I believe I'm the one that made the motion.
Yep.
Or seconded the motion. I have no concerns with the way it's currently doing it.
No, no, I mean, if you, you, we'll vote on this. I, I am almost certain.
I mean, I, I just want to, because, I mean, I'm going to go, I'm going to buy them and I don't want to, like, I'm going to, then there's going to be a, a lawyer at my, my door saying I can't do it.
I don't know.
Well, I can't guarantee that, but I can guarantee you'll have approval to put that up as far as I'm concerned. Let's sign up.
Should be note that the signs, you see the little half moon cut out on the side. They're not going to be square. They're, they're going to be cut on that, that half circle side, so they'll be. Good job, man.
You're on your own on that one.
So, so I just want to say, say one other thing. I mean, I, I they, they seem to be very, they were impressed, I think, with what we had done. As I said, I gave them T-shirts with the logo on it. I've never heard any word from them until Friday, when this was on the agenda. I mean, I, I'm just trying to enhance our neighborhood.
Mm-hmm, no, I, and I think to help you with that decision, I'm going to ask for, uh, the motion to be.
Before you do, can I just ask, would, what's your preference? Would you prefer to get a vote from the board tonight on this sign and then decide how you want to move forward? Or would you rather hold off until you decide how you want to proceed? Maybe you want to talk to the Thieves? I don't know. How would you like to proceed?
To be honest, I want, I want us to be able to move forward. I'm afraid if we don't take a, if we don't, if we, if we don't get a vote to move forward, it's going to be, it's, this thing is going to escalate, I think, with the Thieves.
So, so it's, it's a position of the board, and I mean, that's words in the, your mouth is that you're, you're okay with, with this design. But that if Randy in the neighborhood decides to put different buildings on it, you're okay with it as well.
Well, I'd like it to go back through the process.
So you want to come back?
If they're going to change the sign, I'd like it to go back through the Public Works and Utility Committee for a review of, of how it looks.
Could you come back to the board rather than having to go to the committee?
Let's do that.
Well, is that fair to the committee? Why did it go to the committee the first time?
Well, I mean.
We don't have a, normally, we don't have a lot of stuff.
Yeah, I mean, to have a meeting just for this, I mean, you're.
That's fine. I mean, if it's not, if it's not being rude to the committee, I'm fine taking it on. I just would like to get a look at it before, the, the concept of a sign topper is fine with me. The concept of renderings of local homes is fine to me, and if it changes, I just would like to get one look before I put it up on top of the sign.
So, so Randy, so Randy, that's we got to decide. I mean, if, if you're going to feel more comfortable removing their buildings, then.
I, I'll tell you what, I think what I want to do is, I, I'm, let us modify the two homes. We'll modify them a little bit, change the colors, we'll change the windows around, so it does not look like the Thieves' homes. There are other, there are other neighbors, similar, similar houses in the neighborhood, so, so that they, it, I mean, because what we tried to do was really render it to really look like their homes. We'll, we'll modify these two homes.
Just different windows.
I'm, I'm going to leave, I'm going to leave Netherwood. It's a, it's a national landmark.
Okay.
Can I join this discussion for just, I wasn't going to say anything. Amanda Peterson, 301 South Main. I live in this neighborhood and I've been talking to Randy, working on this. And he makes it sound like, I mean, this was totally his idea, but he makes it sound as if it's like a one-man, like crusade, but the entire neighborhood is behind him on this. My neighbors have talked about it. We've contributed money, so he wouldn't be standing alone in this, so I just wanted to remind people of that. This is not just one man's, I, like, idea that he's out there by himself. We would totally back him.
I don't, my MO, I, I don't, I don't bring any, I don't bring anything forward unless I have, I have backup.
My, my, my biggest concern right now is that we're having a conversation about the Thieves when they're not here on public television and we're, we're, we're basically poking the bear. So the, the next meeting we're going to have is going to be the Thieves coming to present their side of this whole thing.
Yep, they asked, they asked me to share this with the, with the board, their email.
I hear you. That's my concern. I, I don't, I don't appreciate when the village board gets in the middle of private issues and we become the sounding board for what needs to be worked out outside of the room. And then, and then brought to us in a different format. But I, but I get the fact that we have open forum. The community's welcome to come and talk. I just would caution that if the community chooses to air their, their grievances in public, they're inviting a counteraction by the other community member. And I don't know that that's the most productive way of resolving an issue.
They, they asked me to, they sent me the email on Friday night. They asked me to share with the board, as we did, and then they included, I didn't realize they included Randy in the response, and so Randy responded and, I mean, this is, this is.
My thoughts only.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying, this is a public sign, so it's the board's discretion. You could, you could vote tonight and say, leave it this way.
I'm fine, I'm fine leaving it that way. I'm fine if Randy wants to come back in a different drawing. I just don't think we should.
You know what, let's, let's leave it this way.
Okay, so, rather than belabor this anymore.
Yep, I mean, we want to move on.
We've got a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Randy, it's all yours now?
All right.
Thank you for bringing this forward and thank you for all the other wonderful projects you've done in the village to make Oregon a better place.
Well, Jerry?
I'm.
Since we have now approved this sign with the images, can we just please have, um, our attorney review the copyright to make sure that we're not violating anything for our future or, I don't know if it's copyright or their image use or whatever it is, just can you take a look at that? Can we do that?
How much will, how much will that involve? Well, the first thing is, I'm going to, since I don't know anything about that, I'm going to send. Well, the first thing is, I'm going to, since I don't know anything about that, I'm going to send, I'm going to see if there's someone in my office who knows something about this. Because if it was me, I'm starting from scratch and it's going to take more time. So, hopefully, I can find someone in my office who maybe has some background. I'm not sure. So, if I can find someone who's up to speed relatively on this and can generate an answer quickly, that'd be fantastic. If not, and I dig into it, we could be looking at, you know, several hours of work.
So, we're looking at several hundred dollars.
Could be somewhere in the six, $700 range, could be.
And if the signs are ordered and then they make a complaint, how much would that cost us?
Well, depends on the nature of the complaint, you know? I mean, if there is a claim asserted that we have somehow violated their legal rights, then we would tender that to our insurance company and we would, and they would appoint defense counsel and evaluate it. And we have a deductible?
Yep, not for that.
So, you know, again, it's, so we could either say, well, it's up to you guys. If you want an opinion from our office, we will do that for you. I just don't have it right now, because I don't, I'm just not a copyright person.
So, can I, I mean, can I, should I just change it? Is that the easiest way?
I don't want to...
You know, I think if, I think that the whole idea of a drawing of the outside of a house being somehow an infringement on their private rights, to me, is so far-fetched that I wouldn't worry about it at all. And I would take this approval and I would order these signs and I'd put them up on top of the signpost. And I would, like Matt said, recommend contacting the Thieves, having coffee with them, and just clearing the air and figuring out what the concerns are and trying to work out the ruffled feathers that way. But I wouldn't let it slow me down at all.
Okay.
And I think you're trading horses if you do put different renderings up and then you, and then you got to have that same conversation with those homeowners, but then what happens if they sell their house and somebody else buys it and they have a different opinion? I just think that there's no real merit here to be concerned about. But I am not an attorney by any stretch. I'm just using my own, my own thought process.
And I'm just going to say one, I don't, I don't know why, well, I don't know why there's objection.
This whole thing goes back to that TIF district conversation and whether or not you were involved in the conversation about the TIF and not wanting the TIF extended and why did they want the TIF extended? And then, and then the reaction of the community was very strong against, and you turned out in force. And, you know, I can imagine that the Thieves felt a little bit intimidated by that reaction. And that's just, people don't like to be intimidated. They don't like to be backed into a corner.
I did reach out to them and meet with them, and we cleared the air.
That's the only thing I can think of.
I mean, I did, I did. So, I don't know what else I could have done.
Yeah, so I think at this point, I think you're on the right path and you probably just need to continue to talk with them and ask them, you know, what their concerns are and try to include them. Clearly, by the email, they're asking to be included in your, in your community. They're indicating that they are property owners there and that they'd like to be a part of the South Main Street community. And I don't, I don't know how you do that, but it sounds like inviting them to be a part of that would be a step in that direction.
Okay, good to go then, Randy?
Yep.
Amanda?
Just for the record, they are invited to our block party July 29th, I think it is.
Okay.
Public invitation to, to the Thieves, come, be part of it. It's a great place to socialize and get to know the neighborhood.
Okay, thanks, Amanda. We'll see you here next week, right?
And thanks for, for all your efforts in this. It's awesome to see the renovations and the restoration and the pride. And I hope that that spreads. I hope that other pockets of Oregon get that same sense of pride and band together.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item number two, which is the drainage issue that Mike moved.
As I mentioned, I think we may actually move that until May, because I think the next board meeting is going to be somewhat long.
All right, item three is the 2018 Temporary Brush and Yard Waste Agreement.
Yay.
Yay.
Jeff, thanks for that, do you?
Yeah, well, that's awesome. I'm glad it worked out.
I was thinking you're a lot up in... I guess you wanted to do that now. We have a recommended motion here to approve staff to direct legal counsel to prepare a draft agreement between Licon and the Village of Oregon for use of Licon property for a temporary brush and yard waste drop-off site. Jeff, would you, could I have that motion, please?
I'll second that. That's coming from you.
It is.
Okay, great, yeah. I'll give Jeff credit on this one definitely, because, you know, we had looked at many different places and lands owned by the village for opportunities, and Jeff said, well, what about up at Licon? And our response was, it'd be a nice spot, but it's privately owned and we don't have control over that. So, I did, that following day, emailed Licon representatives. I spoke to them late last week, and his response was, absolutely, let's go for it.
Great partners.
Absolutely, and that's why I want to be very clear in thanking Licon for that. And it's, I think it's going to open up a nice opportunity up there. We, of course, vowed to make sure we would take care of it and clean it up when we're done. But we just, we definitely do need an agreement with them for time and allowing us to use it and all that type of stuff, so...
Jeff, you want to maybe explain where it is, for people watching this?
Yes, it's actually, it'll be at the end of Cusick Parkway. This is Braun Road as it comes across. This is Track D on the corner, and then a lot of people park down here then to get onto the bike trail out here. But, so it'll be kind of a, we're going to put kind of a gravel pull-out pad. You can see there's actually a ramp already into that, and then we'll have a spot back here for the brush and yard waste. Our goal is to try to probably do a little more maintenance on average out here, because it'll be a smaller site. But I think it'd be good, we won't have to worry as much about smells and stuff, and it'd just be a nice temporary spot. So, our goal is, assuming you allow us to go forward, we'll get Matt working on the plan. And then we're going to start, I'd like to actually get this up and running well before we even need it to be cleared out at the end of Prairie Parkway, so people can start using it and getting used to it.
And that's kind of a remote location, too.
It is, it is, yeah.
So, President Statean will probably want us to burn back there, won't he?
President Statean will not want us to burn back there. I want to be very clear on that, yes.
What if we sell alcohol while we're burning?
That would be allowed. That's one condition.
We will not, yes. We'd be a very popular brush pile, would not.
You have to fence it if you're going to do that.
If you're going to do that, you better have food to cook over the fire, too, so... But no, I think this is a great opportunity, and again, thanks to Licon for allowing us and Jeff for the idea.
No, that's, again, many thanks to Licon for helping us solve this problem. And when do you envision that being done and moved out of there?
I, oh, you mean being done and out of there?
All done with the site.
We're going to have a pre-con, so I'll get a better idea of that this week, but I'm anticipating we'll be at the other site by hopefully end of September.
Where's the other site going to be?
It's just south of the wastewater treatment plant. It's just moving kind of 90 degrees from where it is now.
Any further questions? And I think we already voted on this, didn't we?
Nope.
Nope.
Okay, I made the motion, Jeff made the second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next up is a Planning Commission meeting from April 5th, and I'll turn that over to trustee Carpenter.
Yeah, just one item here, discussion and action regarding Resolution 1806 approving the naming of private streets in Oregon Parks Neighborhood additions. So, I make the motion that we approve Resolution 1806.
Second, please.
And this is just, in order to assign street names, we have to do this. And so the two street names are Odyssey Court and Ithaca Court, and that has the approval of the developer and the planning commission.
Who seconded it? We didn't catch the second down here.
I'll second.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, we've got a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 10, minutes not requiring action from the Oregon Area Fire EMS District on March 8th and Cable TV Committee from January 10th. Item 11 is unfinished business, of which we have none. Item 12, new business, we have none, or A is none. B is approval of pending new operator licenses that are approved by the Police Department from QuickTrip 302 of Kelly Westbury. Someone please make a motion to approve that.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item C is approval of pending renewal operator licenses, which have been approved by the Police Department. And we don't have any that I see listed. Item 13...
You are correct.
Oh, thank you. We've got a list of future agenda items. Item 14, the board may meet in closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, print one, E, to discuss TIF number five requests from TIC.
Chair, before the motions made, may I ask a favor of the board? Could Amanda be allowed to stay for full sessions, since she'll be dealing with this when she's on the board in a week? So, when you make the motion, if you could include in the motion that you...
Okay, we're going to include in that motion that Amanda Peterson will be attending the closed session.
I'll make that motion.
And a second, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
We got roll call.
Roll call, yes, thank you.
Yes.
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 Thank you. I will adjourn.
We'll just stay here.
Okay, we're going to stay here and adjourn from here then tonight. Thank you, everyone, and good night.